Let's all stand for the pledge. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may receive. Well, the minutes you received copies of the special and the regular, or the work session, and the regular minutes from last meeting. Any additions or corrections, seeing none will stand approved as presented. Pledge of the current financial report, you've all received copies of that. Any questions for the auditor or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Godwin to approve the current financial report. Discussion, call roll, please.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hottashow?
Yes.
Pledge of the agenda, we have nothing to add special to the agenda tonight, so...
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr., yeah, Rogers, to approve the agenda presented. Discussion, call roll.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hottashow?
Yes.
And now we have the public hearing portion. There is one item under the public hearing applying for to the Ohio Department of Transportation for an operating and capital assistance grant. And to be read, and anyone after that reading may comment on the issue. This is the public hearing for this issue.
The city of Greenville is applying to the Ohio Department of Transportation for an operating and capital assistance grant under forty-nine USC Section 5311 and 5339 of the federal transit laws as codified, the Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and the Ohio Public Transportation Grants Program. The operating grant will provide financial assistance for open-door public transportation service for the residents of the city of Greenville, including family health service, with limited service in Dark County during calendar year 2020. The city service would operate Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Fares are $1.50 for elderly and disabled, $3 for the general public. No notices needed for city service. Limited county service will be available Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. with fares at the rate of $1 per loaded mile from point A to point B where drivers are available. A corridor service to Miami County will be available on a limited basis. A transfer will take place at the county line. It will be up to the customer to book rides with both Greenville Transit System and Miami County Transit. The E&amp;D grant will provide state funds to offset the half fares offered to elderly and disabled passengers. The capital grant will provide financial assistance to purchase one light transit vehicle with lift and capital maintenance for vehicle maintenance. Copies of the detailed service description, proposed changes, and project budget may be obtained at the Public Transportation Director's office at 1425 Kitchen-Aid Way between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. A public hearing will be held in an accessible location at 7:30 p.m. on Tuesday, July 16, 2019, in the council chambers in the municipal building, 100 Public Square, Greenville, Ohio, during the regularly scheduled council meeting. Public hearing portion. Note, any request for reasonable accommodations must be received 48 hours in advance. Stephen Wellman, Mayor of the City of Greenville, published on June 16, 2019.
You wrote all that? Okay, that's the public hearing, or that is, anyone from the public wants to comment on this, it's open. No one, why we will conclude the public hearing, and that's all we need to, yes. Come in.
I thought you was waiting on the grant. So, my name is Dan Cross, I live at 501 South Brook Drive, Greenville, Ohio. And I want to bring forward to this council, you're getting ready to do a big project downtown, improvement of the parking lots and the sidewalks. I think this council needs to look real hard at the additional $136,000 to put the conduit in. I know it's a lot of money, but now's the time to do it. I've talked to a couple construction companies, and that cost would probably be doubled if we did it two years, one year, because of the extra work that's involved in it. So, I wanted to bring that forward to council. I know you got a lot of projects you're discussing and looking at, but I think with what you're getting ready to do downtown, this $136,000 to install the conduit would be beneficial to the city and to the public, and for safety reasons too. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I had closed that other public hearing, close it, but that's okay, I'm glad you came up. That's all we need to do on this public transportation thing, right? Okay, we don't take any action. Okay. Very good. Anyone else wanting to address council may do so. Please come forward, state your name and address and your questions or whatever. Ain't no one rushing to the microphone. We will move the agenda to administrative reports. Mr. Mayor.
I just got a couple event announcements to make. Main Street is hosting an open house for downtown Greenville, where seven available storefronts can be viewed and toured, and they'll provide some information for people that are looking into starting a business. That's coming up this weekend, oh, that's the 26th, too, with everything else. So, along with that is, Main Street will be doing the First Triads, the Otterston Stroll, and that'll be 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on August 2nd. And then, of course, Gathering of Garth, the Annie Oakley Days, and the sidewalk sales will begin, that's the 25th, 26th, 27th of July. And of course, we made provisions last meeting to, for permits, we don't need permits for the world's longest yard sale. One twenty-seven yard sale, six hundred miles, six hundred ninety miles long now, six dates, be August 1st through the 4th. And if anybody's interested, there's a box downstairs for stuff a bus, a lot of things for kids need for school that they can't afford or need that we can help provide. So, there's a box downstairs, and the stuff a bus is on July 26th. So, we'll then pass.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Garrison.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. You all have my report in front of you. Few items to discuss this evening. First item, a matter of celebration, would like to invite all of you, if you're available on Thursday at 2:00 p.m. to the intersection of Sycamore and Fourth Street, as we will have a ribbon cutting for the Fort Switzer Street project. Members of ODOT will be present, and hopefully as many council members can attend. There'll be a few speakers, and hopefully we'll get the media to show up and write a nice little article about that street project. So, encourage you all to come out. And then, the rest of this, just going over some of our current projects and projects in the works, and needing to get some direction on how council would like to proceed. With the North Broadway project, a couple meetings ago, we had a discussion about the possibility of installing the acorn-style streetlights from North Main Street out to Russ Road. And I had discussed that they had been in contact with the electrician on the project, their name is Bender Electric, they're from the St. Henry area. And we've had a discussion, and just doing some rough calculations, it would take about sixty of the acorn poles, and he cannot see doing the project for any less than 300,000. It will be more than that. My question to this council, and knowing that figure, and I think that was a number that we had discussed previously, and yes, this includes spacing the lights out further, making sure that the intersections are adequately lit, you know, do you want to, do you want me to spend time with an electrician formulating a more concrete number and moving forward with that street lighting project with the understanding that that, those lights would maybe be assessed to the property owners? I don't know that we have the city funds to really do that project. As you can see, I put in there, already been in conversation with Miami Valley Lighting because it was the original intent to put in the Cobra Head lights from North Main Street out to Russ Road. And so, that carries with it a $30,000 cost for installation on the front end. And then, we just pay a monthly fee through our street lighting bill every month to cover the cost of electricity used in the streetlight, and then we pay a rental fee for the pole, and then also for the fixture.
I would say, as tempting as that would be to have all that decorative lighting, that's a lot of money. My opinion.
And my question would be, you know, where do we stop? You know, do Martin Street, and going out to Switzer?
It would be beautiful, I mean, I don't...
I'm sure it would be.
No doubt.
But...
Golden Road would be too, but we can't afford them.
I'm not here to argue, I'm just looking for direction.
I know, I know.
Would it look right to put them on one side at this time, and then later on, put them on the other side?
What about just running the decorative lights up to Medallion? The other lights on out, because it's more of a commercial area on out.
All those are good possibilities. Cost would be somewhat less, I don't know how much, but yeah.
They do have quite a lot of...
Yeah, I would say you're going three-quarters of the way at that point.
If you're going three-quarters of the way, it'd be three-quarters of two, three-hundred thousand, right?
And the big expense is the underground electric. I mean, light poles that, you know, say $2,000 apiece, you can do the quick math on that. $500 per foundation. So, you can see that the majority of the cost is in the underground electric.
Do they put the same kind of foundation in for the regular lights?
No, actually, the Cobra Head, the spun aluminum pole has a screw foundation, so they actually screw it down into the ground.
Oh, really?
Where would the money come from for this?
That's...
The scenarios are that the city would front the money, and then, one of the options discussed was to assess that cost to the property owners over a period of time. Yeah?
Is that just to the property owners that have frontage on the street?
Again, that would be up to, yeah, and I don't know how far out, I mean, like, when we talk about sidewalk and curb assessment, you can only assess based off of road frontage, not who benefits from the...
Until you have an opportunity to contact every property owner and tell them that type of situation is being considered, I would hate for this, to just do it, and not at least have some input.
I'd like to see what they thought about it.
There were some people here at one time proposing that, but that certainly was only, what, one or two or three maybe? And I think it would be ovest, if you wanted to consider that further, and what kind of a timeline are we under on that?
If we were going to consider this option, we would not move forward Miami Valley Lighting, we would just not have any streetlights out there for a period of time. Because the majority of the lights are coming down due to the project. Because the construction has to go through, so the light has to be removed.
What's everyone's desires on that subject?
Where do we, where do we get the money? I'm asking, do we have the money to do that?
Well, it's not been budgeted, no. I mean, just hadn't really considered this, and I guess that's up to you, whether you want to, for us to look at that a little bit more in depth, so...
This council asked me to follow, to do some work.
I appreciate that.
I'm doing a little bit of work, and now I just, you know, before...
You wouldn't know where to go from here.
Spend a lot of time and effort, I just, if you're comfortable with that and want to move it forward, okay, but if we're not going to do that, or we feel that's too much to consider, then...
The new lighting would look beautiful, just like...
No doubt.
Fourth Street, but I can't see myself, I can't see spend that money.
I mean, the whole thing to me is, if we can afford to front the 300,000 and get it back in assessments, that's fine with me. I mean, I think it'd be a great asset, however, do we have the money? I don't want to get us into a thing where we're doing this all the time and not having any money, and we're going to go down, getting into financial trouble.
It's been discussed that everything that we spend from this point, that something else suffers. We lose something else that we planned for.
We get a lot of budget discussions coming up later on in the year.
It's tough.
And like Doug said, I think it would be beautiful, but that's a lot of money. And it would be a lot of money for the residents to be asked to be assessed also.
If we had it budgeted, that, you know, that'd be a different story, but we don't...
And they're kind of asking for the lights and being assessed for it, right? At least the ones who are here.
Some did.
Some did, yeah, so...
But I think it would behoove to contact every property owner.
Exactly. Let them know what they're getting into.
Yeah, maybe that's something we could look at, doing several a year, start looking at budgeting something for, to do something every year. I don't want to go out that far out of town, out of the main part of town.
Is that something we can do like that, though? I didn't think so.
I guess, what am I hearing?
It's going to cost you money.
A lot of money.
I just heard something about that.
Lot of extra money.
Throw something out. Do you want a survey conducted before you make a decision? On whether or not the people are willing to pay for street lighting? Do you want to spend the money to send them a letter with a little ballot and self-addressed stamped envelope to get it back to us?
Maybe that, and coupled with a more valid opinion on if we've really got the money to do that, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be wise.
Would the residents be assessed the whole $300,000?
I'm sorry?
Would the residents be assessed the whole $300,000?
Again, that's up to you, or the council. I'm telling you, it's going to be more than that.
My opinion's no, don't send the letters out, just leave it go.
Go with a different lighting?
Cobra Heads, and go down there to the Y with the lights, and the projects, it's already on the books.
To me, it's more important to have a lot of lights up. The more lights, the merrier. That would look pretty good.
What kind of lights?
The Cobra Head.
How many are supposed to be from the Y all the way to Russ Road? Remembered?
No, we didn't count, we were talking about location today, we didn't count those. We just did, I met with the electrician, and we just did a rough count.
It'd be less than sixty, or whatever that was to...
Absolutely.
And how much each?
On which one?
The Cobra.
I, it's, it's a, I know that it's $30,000 for installation on the front end, and it's $6.50 per pole per month. And what that, and we've done the math when we were talking about garden wood, for us to go out and purchase the tall 30-foot aluminum spun pole, the cost of that pole equals out to $6.50 over 20 years. So, you either own the pole and pay the money on the front end, or you pay Miami Valley Lighting $6.50 over a period of 20 years, and the cost equals pretty much the same. And, yeah, they take care of the light fixture, they take care of the pole in the event of an accident, they're the ones that are going to come out and fix it, hopefully in a timely manner.
Is that who takes care of our lighting now?
It is, it's who we have an exclusive contract with.
Okay. Are you happy with their service?
We work through issues. But it's, they're a subsidiary of DPNL, it's not like we can shop it unless we want to do that ourselves and own our own.
Not knowing what the citizens would think, you know, the rest of them, other than what was up here, I don't think we can spend that kind of money.
I agree with you. Thank you, Shaez, move ahead with the project.
Moving ahead as proposed.
Is that the consensus?
Yep, pretty much what everybody's... It's a tough decision, but you gotta look at the bucks.
Okay, the next item, letter C, is the Wagner Avenue road widening. We had a committee of the whole meeting to discuss the project. We had quite a few of the property owners that attended that meeting. I don't believe there was any opposition spoken against the project. We have things to consider as far as moving that project. One of the first things would be the resolution of necessity. We've, when we've talked about that project, it's always been the premise that we would take out the loan through Ohio Public Works, which we've been awarded, and then the cost based on road frontage would be assessed to the property owners, as it was explained during that meeting. Our next step is to, for council to consider the resolution of necessity, and if approved, we would start that process.
I have a question.
Okay.
Under topic one B, the number of installments, why does that, is that different than the next section where the, under C, it's to not exceed 10? Is it specifically because it's sidewalks?
Yeah, that was the language that was in the sidewalk ordinance, and I think the other thing that it has to do with is the amount that you're talking about, and...
Is that, okay, let me think here, the, because I don't know for a fact, but I've heard that that ordinance was repealed. Is that the ordinance that you're taking with 10?
No, the resident, so, the Ohio Revised Code is what allows us to assess certain improvements. And you can assess as a city project, or you can do what we're talking about for sidewalk replacement, and you can assess repairs, but you give the property owner the ability to do, to make the repairs before the city would come in and do it for them if they chose not to. Under Wagner Avenue, this is a project, so the project as designed would be bid out and constructed by the city, and then the final construction costs would be based upon road frontage, would then be assessed to the property owner.
Okay. Yeah, I understand all that, I just didn't understand the timeframes being different.
And the, and the ten, and the number of assessments is not necessarily regulatable by Ohio Revised Code, that was a number that was put in the local ordinance that was repealed.
And that basically, the Wagner Avenue project just is for curb scatters and sidewalks?
And storm drainage.
Storm drainage, okay.
And the extension of the water lines.
Okay.
And sanitary lines to the west side of the road. And just, do we want to move that forward, or do you want me to present the information to the law director to have that legislation?
Which place are on that one?
I think we need to move forward with it.
Yep.
Just get her done.
So, that's consideration of the grant.
I'm sorry, John, it was grant.
Do we need legislation?
I'm sorry, sir.
Do we need legislation?
For the resolution of necessity, yes, because we'll take that engineer's estimate and the numbers that were broken out by road frontage, those all become exhibits in the legislation.
Well, I would think then we need the legislation, I mean, we can move that direction then.
Okay. Then, letter D, the sidewalk replacement program. Again, we've had the committee of the whole, we've had the public meeting, the topics to consider, A through E, those are all items that at some point need to be discussed, I don't know if that's this evening, but those are questions that would be answered, that would be included in a resolution of necessity. I guess I would just ask council, is there any more information you need from me on that topic? And then, it would be up to council to say, yes, they're ready for the resolution of necessity for that project to move forward.
We've got it. Item C, it says annual installment not to exceed 10. Is that 10 years?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, I thought the auditor was requesting no more than three, or at least about three and no more than five.
Correct.
So, where did this 10 number go?
That ordinance that was repealed, I was taking the language from that when I wrote this. I simply cut, copied, and pasted from the last council meeting, those were all in my report.
So, that would have to be changed.
Well, it's just... Well, it's just, it's a decision, all of those are a decision that needs to be made.
Man, are these things that we can talk about tonight, get this, all of these parameters set?
How long do you have?
I designated a night for city council meeting, but... I mean, when, when do we do this?
The council, new idea.
We can, we can talk about it now, or we can keep, keep moving along, delaying it, but...
Well, the first item says next step to prepare a resolution for, of necessity, so I think that's the first step, correct, Kurt?
Well, then we have to consider the topics below to, for that, for that... That resolution, we're not, yeah, we need to consider these topics, or at least provide some direction, so that that resolution could be written.
I wanna check with the law director on something. On the sidewalk ordinance that we operate under.
I'm talking about the Ohio revised code.
Yeah, the Ohio revised code. You have to have a resolution of necessity to send someone a notice that their sidewalks are in disrepair and they needed to repair them, um, i.e. in the next six months, the next nine months, the next 12 months, the next 30 days, whatever the case may be. Do, do we have to have a resolution of necessity to do that?
The resolution of necessity is for the assessment. It's a, so, no, you don't have to wait for a resolution in order to do that, and what in fact, the higher revised code says that after you order somebody to do it and they don't, it says you may then assess it, rather than say you shall.
Right.
So it's still within the council's discretion.
So...
Do we need a city ordinance to cover all these things?
We can operate under the highest, highest code.
That's what we've been operating in.
The question is enforcement, I guess.
Yeah.
That's where there's been a lapse for about the last 20 years.
So we don't have to have a resolution of necessity to send a letter to someone saying, you need to fix the sidewalk, period?
But the administration then has no teeth to make the repair and have the property owner pay for it through the assessment process without the resolution of necessity.
What makes a sidewalk in need of repair? Because one of the sections that one of the organizations that I... This is a work for, volunteer in, is just cracked. Doesn't pose a danger, it doesn't appear. So it's just a crack in the sidewalk. Repair that, is, is there any guidelines to that kind of stuff?
My suggestion would be if, if you send out such a notice, that it would include, if you feel that this is an error, then you can feel it, uh, cause I'm, there's no guarantee anything's right or wrong, I mean, or you could be sending the letter to the wrong person, it'd be good to be able to, you know, you give them a deadline to fix their sidewalk, but then they say, you know, there's a hairline crack in one corner, but it doesn't, you know, it isn't displaced. Hey, I'm not the judge of what's a bad sidewalk, cause I'm sure I don't know. I can tell it when I see it, I guess.
Well, I can tell when, you know, if, if one's raised up a foot, I mean, that obviously is got an issue.
I wondered about that, too, about trees, um, because if, if included in that is the recommendation that, that because tree roots are causing the lip upsurge or whatever, uh, does someone need to go to the tree commission about replacement? Tearing out old trees? Cause that is separate body, obviously, and they do have some authority about old growth trees and things like that. That would be another thing I would think that should be addressed.
Didn't all that, wasn't all that criteria written down in a pamphlet handed out at the open house for sidewalks? Everybody, everybody was able to have it, see it.
Yeah, but who made that up?
That was the, that language came from the sidewalk ordinance that was repealed. So through Planning and Zoning Department, the administration at the time, uh, as a part of the resolution of necessity are the plans and specifications. So part of the specifications would include if your sidewalk does not meet this criteria, this is how it was graded to determine replacement.
That's what I was asking, if we needed legislation on this, if we're working off of legislation that was repealed, and we're, we're going by somebody else's opinion, we don't have, we don't have the firm foundation to stand on, and we have an ordinance in place, a law. Do we need that first? Are we getting the cart before the horse? What's the definition of a sidewalk in need of repair?
Well, I would say, dare say, is significant to adopt regulations about it, sure, sure. Because as I said, somebody could say, uh, my sidewalk isn't that bad. Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, I don't know, I, you know, I'm not trying to argue for or against that idea.
Well, years ago, we adopted, our council at the time adopted existing structures laws, that was a, a framework from the federal government called Boca. It was since repealed, uh, and basically it was repealed because it called for a review board of appeals that included an architect, and at the time, there wasn't an architect available. So that, that's, you know, there should be an avenue which to, that you could appeal, you know, this section here doesn't need to be, and then who do you go to, to appeal it? It should be, you know, part of the ordinance that doesn't exist right now.
I think that's a simple matter of adopting what was there before without a part you don't like in that old ordinance, I guess.
Yeah, which we need to kinda review it and maybe put it into a committee to review.
Sure.
Sure, we love committees.
Somebody does.
I think you'd have a public hearing.
Excuse me, there were some parameters that were presented out of the zoning and planning, is that not correct?
Yes, that would be who offered the opinion on, and can...
But it hasn't been officially adopted by this council?
No.
Okay.
But it is allowed, a part of the resolution of necessity is for the plans and specifications. Basically, what, how were the, that's why that was given in that packet, is because that, as an exhibit, would be included with the resolution of necessity on how the sidewalks were graded.
We can always go back and look at the assessment that, that was made already and decide whether maybe they missed something, maybe it's not as bad as what it looked to be when you just go by a criteria written down on piece of paper. We can always review that and make sure that it meets those specifications that were written down at the time, or that they went by when they did their assessment.
But what I'm saying is, if this council has not formally adopted that issue, or those, those parameters.
Right, yeah.
Then you have nothing to go on.
That's what we were talking about before.
It has no teeth.
Right.
Right.
I understand that.
So...
That's why I said we could do that.
Shall we not do that first?
Well, of course, I just said that, too.
Does that make sense?
Yes. I, um, did some walking around today from Walnut Street to Locust Street, took some pictures, went down and looked at the painted sidewalks they done, and this is what a bad sidewalk looks like.
Oh, there's all kinds of stuff.
I know, but I'm just saying that there's discrepancies in parts that they didn't mark and they did mark from choice one. And, um, you know, some stuff they didn't mark at all. They need, that, I don't know why they didn't.
Well, on the annual installments, um, I'm in charge of a different nonprofit organization that has a house, sidewalks are bad, I understand that. The, it straddles section one and section two. Section one's estimate was $4,750. And then the next year, the sidewalk's actually longer and has a driveway apron, so we're looking roughly at $10,000.
Yeah.
If we only had, if, if we only go five years, 10, 10 installments being, you know, on the taxes, that's $2,000 a year in additional taxes, plus whatever interest rate or other fees that may be involved. And that is quite a burden for somebody that's going to be paying into an escrow as well as income. So I would like to see something in considerations of those that are not going to be able to pay for this, or have to leave their homes because they can't afford it.
So, shall we, I mean, what's this council's pleasure?
Since there's so many questions that need to be answered, maybe go to a committee?
Well, I can make that assignment.
I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, everybody's got questions that, that, that really nobody can really give a definite answer to, and maybe if there's a committee with everyone here and they can get answers, and then bring it back to us in one meeting.
We can do a committee of the whole to set, to establish the parameters for the whole program. I don't, we didn't seem to get that accomplished the other night, talking about the sidewalk issue.
No. I mean, you know, it, it just seems like we could sit here all night and go back and forth and back and forth, you know?
See, I just...
And no decisions being made.
Yeah, I see, I just, just had heard that the ordinance that kind of established this sidewalk, uh, program was actually, um, repealed.
It was?
So then it's like, wait now, maybe we need to step back and take a look at what we need to establish to get this stuff done, in a good manner, and, you know, we need to look on it at a broader scale. How can you do section one if there's an issue, but let section 10 go for 10 more years down the road? I think we need to address the necessity. It's gonna be a major project.
That's basically what I'm saying, is, is there are so many questions that need to be answered, and we could sit here all night and go back and forth and back and forth, and if a committee were to get together, possibly, maybe they could shorten it up and, you know?
The original, if I'm not mistaken, included, uh, the original proposal included putting sidewalks in all of Greenville, regardless of what subdivision and whether or not, if they had no sidewalks, it was to be add sidewalks to all subdivisions that did not have them.
That's one part we'll leave out, right?
Pardon?
That's, that's one part we wouldn't leave out, right? We're talking about repairing and replacing the existing sidewalks.
Probably what we're based upon now.
Right now, that's what we're looking at.
Yes.
But it's not, it's not, uh, it, it may be short-sighted to think that we don't need them in other places. There's a lot of places where the sidewalk is dead end into the next person's property, even up in my neighborhood. You got whole neighborhoods that don't have them, and then you have neighborhoods that do, and it's kind of a strange word, not that anybody walks on my sidewalk, they walk on the street.
Spinning our wheels. We just had a, we just had a meeting, committee of the whole the other night, and, um, to be fair, that was the first time I ever heard that the thing we were basing a lot of our things on was repealed. I mean, we probably should have all along been looking at what is it we want in the first place, and defining all that. So now it looks like we need to do that, and I, I don't think it would be anything other to, to do it as a committee of the whole again, so everybody can get their questions answered and move this expeditiously.
My, my opinion is, and it may be the lone opinion on this, is that we need a referendum on the tax levy, go to the whole city with the idea of having sidewalks. Sidewalks repaired, sidewalks installed. I don't think it's a bad idea, I'm not saying that we need sidewalks everywhere, but there is a lot of areas that don't have sidewalks. One area that, that I've always looked at is the, uh, the property, you look at Switzer, at the house right next to the south gate there on Switzer Street, during the fair, people walk through the yard, there's no sidewalk there. Why? I mean, it's, it's not like they don't know that this is gonna happen every year, and they just kill a path right through the yard. So maybe there needs to be sidewalks down Switzer, there are a lot of places down Switzer in the business area that do not have sidewalks.
What do you think the chances are of a referendum passing involving increasing taxes?
Then you're leaving it to the people.
Well, that's true, that's true, but we really need to get the word out so people can get out and vote.
Well, yeah, I think the word needs to get out, if we go that route, and then we have to determine what the cost is gonna be, and what kind of a, a tax increase will be necessary.
Kurt, just as a guess, just as a wild guess, how much money do you think it would take? I mean, I'm asking you a loaded question here, bud, but, to fix all the sidewalks in the city, and, and do it...
Well, you're looking at 700,000 just for section one, and there's 10 sections, that would just, just alone to do these repairs, over seven million bucks.
Well, well, there's some areas over, that I, at this moment in time, don't need as much, right?
Well, I don't, I don't know, you look at, look at the sidewalks up in the north section above Russ Road, you know, you think, oh, yeah, all these people have my sidewalks, but when they were installed, they sunk away from the curb, so you have curbs sticking up four inches, they're, they're all in. You know, it's not that it's a newer neighborhood determines whether a sidewalk...
I understand that.
You know, we just need to get something started, you know, it's like, goodness, uh, why and when, and who did what years ago, I, it's just, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, if we wanna move ahead and repair some sidewalks, let's do that. I just, good lord, that's, this is crazy, taking forever, making decisions on this stuff.
Seems like we're kicking the can down about five years.
Yeah.
Well...
They've already gone for 20, 30.
Again, I, I, I guess I make the question, how many notices have been sent out to people who have dis, sidewalks in disrepair that they need to repair?
None.
Have any?
None.
Okay.
How many do you want sent out?
I think we need to, to repair the sidewalks that we have now that needs repaired.
That's right.
Start, start that way, uh, down that avenue first, before we take on the whole city.
Right.
People can walk down my sidewalks, down Treaty Way, and not worry about stumbling, and there's some down three to four inches from the curb.
Right.
The top of the curb. But we got other sidewalks, you really can't walk down them.
Well, see, I got a notice that the one section that was marked just has a crack in it, nobody's gonna stumble over that crack, cause it's never...
Right.
So it needs to be an appeal process, and we need to have an ordinance, what we need can do. I'm not saying that the, the Habitat House that's there straddling the two section doesn't need sidewalks, they do. I believe they're the old slate sidewalks, slabs. Probably is historical. Annie Oakley probably walked right down that sidewalk.
We need to get on it, though, man.
You wanna develop the parameters for the, in other words, what this council can pass that says, if you're going to put in the sidewalk, these are the parameters you must need? We have them, but we have not formally adopted it, right? So it has no teeth until we do so. So could somebody come up with some parameters and present it?
We can present what we have. I mean, so my question, my first question to council is, and we've had several meetings on this, irregardless of what was marked or out there, what did or did not get marked, does anyone have an issue with the parameters that were presented?
No.
Is there changes that need to be made to that? Now, I'm not saying, how was it graded out there? I'm saying the parameters themselves, and I think that's what you're asking for. Was there something wrong with those?
I don't think so. I think it's pretty clear.
If we want to change it from a half, a quarter inch crack that determines if a slab needs to be repaired, to a half inch, or a one inch, or a two inch, whatever number you want to throw out, I would tell you that our consultant, those, the parameters that we were using is very similar to what other municipalities use.
This, right?
That, right there, that's right. You know, I, do you need to have a meeting with that consultant? Do you need an engineering opinion to determine what is in need of replacement?
Well-
I think these guidelines are pretty clear, in my opinion, but-
But we have not officially adopted that.
Well, we need to. Let's just do it.
Should we go out and get everybody a copy, or what?
Everybody got this, right?
Boy, yeah, I'm sure they don't have-
The mayor has the authority to go send in these letters tomorrow morning, right?
Right.
And we have that 20-some thousand dollars that we spent on them to tell us that we got bad sidewalks. See, you got the names, addresses, all that. So can he send letters out to those people tomorrow?
I doubt if it'd be happened right away tomorrow morning.
Well, I mean, next week, whatever.
To do what, though?
Can. Say their sidewalks are bad.
Okay, they've already received those letters because we sent them those letters as a notification.
You got a certain-
No, we did not, didn't establish a timeframe, but they received those letters as an example of what was coming down the pike and inviting them to the public meeting that we had at Memorial Hall. But did it have, and I, because I was under no authority to say, you have 30 days, 60 days, 90 days to get something done. We have no teeth, if that's the term that you want to use, to assess or make them do it. We're just basically sending out a letter of notification that, based on those parameters, your sidewalk is in disrepair and we want you to fix it. It's more of a suggestion than a demand if we sent a letter out tomorrow.
So then we need to have something definitely on the books.
We need to have the specifications, and if it's this council's prerogative to assess the cost in the event that the homeowner does not follow through with repairing the sidewalk, then we need a resolution of necessity. And that resolution of necessity needs to have the plans and specification, it needs to have everybody's name, the property owners, their parcel number as identification, the drawing, a drawing that's accurate, that depicts the areas that need to be replaced, and those would all be attached to the resolution of necessity as an exhibit. The work, when that goes out, there would be an appeal process. Well, we're actually already been through some of the appeal process because we've received phone calls and property owners have called, and there are some things that we've seen, some discrepancies. You know what, we're going to get that, we'll take care of that.
The resolution of necessity doesn't need to come until you see how many sidewalks it's going to be, because a lot of the property owners may need their own.
Sure. So as I explained to Mr. Burkett at Thursday night's meeting, I know, was that the resolution of necessity also has to include a timeframe? So if we give them, without the resolution of necessity, we give them 60 days. Okay, now council says we're going to send the resolution of necessity. There has to be another, no less, by ORC, no less than 30 days to get that work done. So if we send one letter as a suggestion, give them 60 days, if they don't do it, then we spend a resolution of necessity, or we, the resolution of necessity gets approved, they get notified by certified mail or personal delivery, and they get at least another 30 days to get that work done. In the event that that work is not done, then the city can come in and do the work for them. And then they have to be given a certain period of time to come in and pay that bill in full at the auditor's office. If they do not meet that deadline, then that bill can be, or that fee can be assessed to their property taxes. So we're kind of sending letters out twice. We're going to send one out as a suggestion, then if you don't do it, then we're going to send one out after the resolution of necessity's passed. That's why it's set up, the resolution of necessity, and Mr. Brand, you know, says you can, you don't have to, but at least it gets the process started that if, you know, next year you want to assess it, then we can.
So in other words, in order to get this ball rolling, we need the approval for the necessity.
It sounds like the first step would be to approve the specifications. What determines a sidewalk in disrepair? Are the specifications that we've discussed adequate, sufficient? Is there a change that needs to be made?
Can you bring something in writing next meeting?
As far as what? Do you want it in the form of an ordinance to be approved, or do you want to have discussion? And I don't mean that argumentatively, I'm just asking the question.
Well, I- Just to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, yeah. And in my opinion, I think we can come up with an ordinance based upon these things. I mean, a lot of people spend a lot of time doing a lot of work coming up with these things, and like has been said, we just lack an ordinance. So let's make this stuff official and make an ordinance, and then we can keep the ball moving here instead of having meetings all the time.
In some sense, we agreed to this already.
Yeah, we did, we did.
We'll send out to our residents. You know, it's like, adopt it.
Okay.
This letter from choice one stated April 11th. Today is the 18th of July?
I mean, get the-
16th, I'm sorry.
The ordinance, you incorporating those parameters, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
For the next meeting, I'll tell you again, yeah.
Okay. Because we have actually-
The thing that, if you're trying to expedite this some though, having an answer to questions like how long you're going to give them, what kind of assessment it's going to be, if you don't, the penalty that may be associated with it is good for that first letter, no matter what.
But it's still good for us to get an ordinance in place.
Whether it's a 15% surcharge plus 3% from the auditor, or 15.5% or whatever it may be. But having that so that when Kurt's letter goes out, it scares them at least into doing something, or not. But I think it makes it a whole lot better for Kurt and the administration to be able to tell people, you know, if you don't comply, this is what you may be up against.
So-
Three to five years.
So then I under, so I think we have the specifications worked out, that you want an ordinance that records that the specifications, that's what we're going to grade sidewalks off of. That's the step number one, and that's one ordinance. We still, as Mr. Brand just explained, have these other questions that need to be answered at some point. So my question back is, okay, and what forum, if we're going to do this, how will we, how can we achieve these answers?
The only discrepancy I saw was the not to exceed, you said, 10, and I assume that's 10 years.
Correct.
And in our discussion the other night, the auditor said at least no more than five.
Right.
And possibly three. And I, you know, is it something that can be, I guess for want of another term, negotiated? Well, three, in other words, we're going to set it either one-
It has to be set for the-
Okay.
The whole thing, right?
Resolution. And then the other topic, date of homeowner completion. You know, we have to give the homeowner a period of time-
Right.
-to get the work done.
Reasonable.
Yeah. No less than 30 days, definitely it can be more than 30 days.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So that date needs to be set.
Right.
And then we had conversation, and I don't know that, Roxanne, would you want to speak to the matter of interest versus surcharge?
Right, I talked to the county auditor, and basically, we can, we can assess a charge at the onset, when we first do the assessment, but it would not really be considered interest. It would be considered basically a handling fee or a surcharge. What I was told was probably the best way to consider how to assess this would be whatever we would, whatever time period and what dollar amount we would lose in interest on our, the money that we're going to be paying out, we could put that into a handling fee. Or if we were going to have an outside company do the work for us, then that would be part of the handling fee. So we can, we can hone in on that a little bit more. My guess is probably going to be less than 5.5%, which was what I was originally telling you, so.
Does that have to be in the parameters of this?
The resident, that's more down the road when we get ready to do the assessment. But it would be good to, as Mr. Brand alluded to-
Have it up front.
Have it up front, that way it can be included in the letter, and that's a very excellent idea because the more information that we can put out there, because these are all questions that homeowners would have and then would be calling me and is like, I don't know, but if we've got that answered, we can definitely convey that.
And also was pointed out the other night, you know, when people know what all these fees are, I'm sorry, when people know what all these fees are, the more likely they may just do the work on their own and get it done.
With that in question, if the city bids that out for, you know, a block or whatever that never got done, and is that prevailing wage?
It would be. Definitely based on the dollar amount, it's a repair.
What's that rate?
I don't, I mean, that's-
It goes off the project, so that's-
Yeah, I mean, it would just be, it would be publicly bid and, you know, whatever contractor would bid on it, contractor or so forth.
It'd be 45 bucks an hour or something like that, or more.
You know, you still, you look at the projects that, some of the improvement jobs that we do in sidewalks, and you look at their bid item for sidewalk, it's between four and $6 a square foot, at least in their line item, so it's not, you know, unreasonable. Of course, now they're doing a long stretch of sidewalk in one area, and they're not jumping from point A to point B, so my guess is maybe somewhat higher than that just due to the mobilization costs.
Another thing too, as far as on the time limit for the customer to do it, is the number of contractors, concrete contractors out there versus the amount of time they would have to do it. So in other words, if we gave them three months to do it, you know, maybe they couldn't get it done in that three months.
Okay, so we're going to proceed with the-
I'll proceed with the specifications, I was just looking for some direction on when we, you know, answer these questions, because we haven't really answered them concretely.
What's this council's choice? Your decision?
On C, five years. On C, sorry, on C, five years. Date of completion, April. Does that sound? April 2020.
April 1?
Date of completion, oh yeah, April 1.
April 3, I would-
April 30th.
At least.
Cold, rainy, yeah, give them a month.
I'm sorry?
You're just, depending on what the spring looks like-
Right.
Tough time of year.
We don't know, it's hard to predict.
Yeah, so I would suggest that you go to the end of April.
Okay.
If April is the month you choose.
April 30th. Two down already. Well, I think it's- It's, we can make these decisions though, I mean-
Rate of surcharge, that'd be something that the auditor would work out.
Well, I don't know, and I don't know if she's given that some thought, I don't-
Surcharge?
Surcharge? I guess at this point, it would not to exceed 5.5% is what we were originally talking about, possibly less. Again, we could, as assessment time gets closer, we'll be able to have a much better fix on that, so.
You're talking about one-time charge?
Right, and it'd be a one-time charge.
You could say up to-
Up to 5.5%.
And it's a one-time charge?
Yes, yes. Now, the fee that the county is going to charge, that will be annual. Every time they do, take it, do the assessment on an annual basis, they are going to take their fee, so.
Is that determined by the amount that's being assessed?
That is determined by the amount.
Do you have, do you know what, how, what, how they assess that? Is that like a percent, or?
It's 3%.
3%.
Each year. On a balance, right?
Correct.
On a balance each year.
Okay.
On letter- On letter E, maybe six months.
So what that means is, determine the time from, in which the property owner can pay cash. So for this to happen, we've passed the resolution of necessity, we've given the property owner till April 30th to get the work done. April 30th, they haven't done the work, we go back out, we calculate who hasn't done what, we put together a city project, we put that out, work out for bid, we give the contractor, we'll say August 31st, contractor, you've got till August 31st to get all this work done. So, and we'll say that it was a good summer and he was able to, or they were able to get that work done by August 31st. So from the time that work's done, now the council has to pass another resolution or piece of legislation that says, okay, this is the final cost, based on the work done, this is what you're going to be billed. And then that bill goes out to the property owner. Then the property owner has however many days you determine to pay that bill. I would say six months is maybe somewhat excessive. Generally, you get a bill, you've got 30 days to pay it. If you don't pay it within that timeframe, then that's when it goes on to be assessed to your taxes.
If it's submitted in timely fashion to the county auditor.
That's the other, that's the other key to this.
If you wait till August 31st, you're probably waiting too long.
Won't get it done.
Right.
Then we're going to wait, we're basically waiting another full year to make the assessment. So then that does, that gives them almost 12 months, same as cash.
Is that acceptable to this council?
Yeah.
It would certainly be a-
I'm sorry, I-
I was asking her, if we had, if we knew by August 15th, did they give you enough time to get the information?
They will allow us, usually they will allow us to get stuff in by at least the middle of September, so if we were to make sure that it got cut off by August-
I think we're on a very tight-
We are.
-to get that all done. I mean, I-
Yeah, I, you know, personally, I, being, having some construction background, I don't think you're going to find people that's going to get it done within the timeframes that you're saying now. I don't think it could happen. About April 30th, yeah. I can see that's not happening. You've got weather, a lot of weather to contend with at that time of the year. It's not going to be done.
So if that was the case, and thinking about the difficulty of making the assessment by September, just follow the logic, do you give the construction, give the property owner until the end of the construction season to get all the work done? What would that be, October 31st? Then, you know, by winter, we compile everything over the winter, and then we take this and make this a 2021 project? Because we're basically giving them the whole 2020 season to complete the work. And then if they don't do it, we start our project early spring of 2021- don't do it, we start our project early spring of twenty twenty-one with the intent of getting it all done and being able to assess. We're not out any money at that point. That timeline. We haven't paid a contractor to do anything.
That timeline sounds more reasonable because you don't have that many people that's, that do concrete.
Might be some entrepreneurial person who starts a business.
I talked to Clarence about doing that.
You can't bid on it.
No.
The one thing I would say is when it comes to the city, getting the work done and putting it out for bid, we've not really had any issues getting contractors and getting the work done.
Well, how much, say, say you've given them until April the thirtieth and somebody has chose not to do their own or to find a contractor. How much time then do you need that you're gonna be able to bid all that's left and get it done? Can you do that and have it done before August thirtieth or whatever day? Is that a possibility?
Again, a lot of it's weather dependent. If everything, if, if the weather was decent and all that, yeah, I think concrete, a concrete crew, a company that does come in, could come in and get it done.
Why did it take so long to get sw化的?
It didn't.
Thought it took like a year.
It. You were also dealing with curbs, street construction. I mean, there was a whole lot more than just coming in and doing sidewalks.
Do trees, aren't you doing trees too?
If trees are in the, in the, causing the problem in sidewalks, they have to be removed.
I, I guess I'm not understanding your thought.
Are you comparing those, you comparing those two?
Well, yeah.
Seriously?
Projects, I don't see projects moving in just a couple of months. So you're talking about a lot of sidewalk, a lot of.
Thank you, John. Thank you. I've been trying to.
I mean, you know, it's not wave a magic wand and it gets done.
That's right.
And then you're gonna have people that's gonna appeal. You're gonna have people that may appeal to a board. So I mean, you know, there's a lot of consideration to be done when you're setting a timeframe. You wanna have more time, not less.
So do you like the second option?
Yeah, I do like the second option.
Give them basically the entire construction season of twenty twenty?
I don't see why not.
And then we would have a twenty twenty-one project of doing the sidewalk. At the same time, simultaneously though, in twenty twenty, we are starting phase two. We're sending the letters out so that once we get this ball rolling every year, we're doing a sidewalk project.
Well, I think we have to start because we can play what-if all night.
Sure.
And if we get this thing started and we need to change, kind of in the middle of the stream because of something, I mean, you know, good heavens, we've never seen so much rain in the spring as we've seen this past summer or spring and so forth. It may not be that way and we can't count on that. So let's go ahead and do something. If we need to change it, I guess we could change horses in the middle of the stream a little bit. Our stream's not too.
So do you want to make the completion, homeowner completion date, October thirty-first, November thirtieth, December thirty-first? Obviously, we're not pouring in a winter.
Right, yeah.
Let's say October thirty-first, probably seems reasonable, right?
October thirty-first would be.
And then, then that gives us time to go out and, okay.
Have it done before the Halloween parade. That'd be good.
I just want to throw out there, that means another year before you see any money come in.
It gives people another year to.
Three years.
Know what they've got coming.
But we haven't spent any money until twenty twenty-one.
And it gives people another year to know that this is in place and.
Okay.
We're doing this. And whatever they gotta do, they gotta do.
Five years of a, a five-year assessment.
Yeah.
Add a five-point-five percent surcharge.
Not to exceed.
Is there an administration fee on that too?
No.
Just, or the fifteen percent we talked about it?
No.
That was another municipality.
Yes, that was.
And that was kind of bestated. That wasn't a.
It came up in our meeting.
That wasn't a tax or.
That was just to inform you what other people were doing.
That, that was a fifteen percent surcharge.
Surcharge, not an interest rate.
Not an interest rate.
Administrative fee.
Correct.
They called.
Where are you calling?
And then, so the homeowner gets the bill. If they didn't do the work, how long you wanna give them the, to pay it? Thirty days?
Thirty to forty-five in that ballpark area.
Pick one.
Well, thirty.
Then other items that we talked about, waiving the permit fee for the project area. Then the discussion spilled over to, should we charge a permit fee for any property owner wanting to replace sidewalk?
Yeah. I say let's waive the permit fee for anybody that wants to do it because we're gonna be waiving it for him. We're gonna be waiving it for him, we're gonna be waiving it for him when they, we do their zone anyway. But that's encourage people to do it now.
Yeah, do it now.
And then we waive the permit.
I'm just asking.
They have to get a permit.
I don't mean any of this argumentative. I just, there are questions that have come up and, and we need direction, okay, so.
Oh, and I know that, we know that. We're just getting demonstrative.
I think we're all on the same.
Okay. So, so waiving the permit fee citywide.
Yeah.
I believe that would take.
Different.
A different ordinance?
For sidewalks.
Just for sidewalks. Sidewalk replacement and repairs.
Or. Driveway, driveway aprons are included on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Kurt. On the permit, my son decided to go ahead and have their sidewalks done. The contractor that they hired didn't realize they had to have a permit. So they're held up some and it's on Ash Street. I don't know whether you've seen it or not, but anyway, it needs to be highlighted, bold print, whatever you wanna call it, in those packets sent out to the customer, to the people, that there is a permit, but there is no fee for it.
Absolutely.
But so that they understand that.
Okay.
Because that is gonna delay their progress, getting everything done. If, for instance, we send a person down to inspect, you know, and all of a sudden we find out they don't have a permit fee, or permit, and then it's gonna delay everything, so.
Okay, okay, okay. For, again, for sidewalk only, there's a bonding requirement with so many dollars per foot for you, that's what you looked at. The conversation regarding bonding, I, at Thursday night's meeting, I explained how a bond is an insurance policy. If I was the property owner for the, in needing to do this, I think for the small amount of money, it's a good insurance policy to make sure that the work gets done adequately. But the conversation was to make the bond optional. Is that bond optional for all sidewalk replacement all over the city? We're not doing the entire city at once, so I would caution against that. Or is the bond just optional for this particular area? Or do we want to make, leave the bond in place and not change any of the parameters to the bonding?
I think it would be a good idea to keep the bonding.
I think so.
Everyone agree with that?
How much would the bonding be then?
It's so much per, per foot. Like if you do just one side, it's like a hundred bucks. And to go do, if you live on the corner, then it's, could be.
The two sides.
So it, so what happens is, we say it's a hundred dollars per lineal foot. So if you have a hundred lineal feet times a hundred dollars, what is that, ten thousand, thousand? Ten thousand? You have to get a bond for that amount of money. Okay, it's not that it's gonna cost you ten thousand. You have to get a bond for that, an insurance policy to basically say that I'm insuring this much sidewalk for that dollar amount. And you said you contacted insurance, could your, what were they gonna charge you or?
Thousand bucks just for one side. So that's our minimum charge.
Minimum charge for a bond.
Yeah. They call it an opening, is what they call it. Now, the question I got about the bond, that you didn't have the bond. Let's say we waived the bond fee. I'm just gonna ask you this.
Sure.
And you guys went down, inspected it, did your things, and it failed. We have an issue with it and it has a problem. And I put it in myself. I didn't hire a contractor to do it. And they, you guys come back in, say it's bad, needs to be replaced. So the city comes back in, tears it up, not cashing the bond, no, I don't have a bond.
Okay.
You come back in, you assess it to my taxes because I didn't put it in right. So what's the difference from the bond that I didn't have a bond that you guys can cash in?
Well, you would've paid a thousand dollars to presumably pay for your very expensive sidewalk. You paid a thousand dollars for that. It didn't get put in right. We tore it out. You only had to pay a thousand dollars for the bond. It doesn't, you didn't put it in correctly, we rip it all out. The cost of that sidewalk was five thousand dollars. Not only did you pay five thousand dollars the first time, you're gonna pay five thousand dollars the second time. So instead of six thousand dollars with a bond, you're paying ten thousand dollars total.
That's gonna encourage me to put it in right the first time.
Well, encourages you, but it's, if you, if, if a homeowner did not. It, it's an insurance policy.
I don't, I understand.
You know, if you, if you knew and you were comfortable in your skills that, hey, I'm gonna be able to do this and I'm gonna do it right, then your risk is much lower than the person who may not be as skilled.
They're gonna cost me that concrete, the gravel, I think it's three inches of concrete, or three inches of gravel and four inches of concrete. You gotta have on that.
Whatever. Is there specifications to the markings on the sidewalks as far as?
What they mean?
Yeah, the crack thing?
Sure.
I'm not following what you're saying.
Well, you need a scoring of a sidewalk.
What those marks mean is.
Expansion joints?
Expansion, well.
You do have to, yeah, so when you're replacing or running sidewalk, you have to have expansion joint every so many feet. My preference, but we don't, we don't specify the type of cut. The cuts are specified every five feet. I'm talking about control joints. I prefer trout joint versus a saw cut, but that's just me. So, but yeah, I mean, the, the distance of sections, if you will, between, between joints, yes, that's specified. And yes, the use of expansion joint is specified. Okay.
So all these guys that are doing these work, this work ahead of time for the homeowner, they should know what they're doing.
They should, but people will cut corners.
Mm-hmm.
I've poured sidewalk before.
And that's why we need inspection as that, that work is.
Right, that's why, yeah, that, that's why you have the inspection fee and you have the inspector. And, you know, that's what they go out and they look at. I understand as an encouragement that, you know, waiving the permit fee is throwing a bone, hey, we're still gonna do the inspection, but, you know, we want you to get this done, so.
What else do you need?
Um, and I'm gonna work on this and I'll have this by the, by the next council meeting. And this is something that we'll need to go into the spec as, as far as what's bad and then maybe ways that can be, is that, we talked about that grinding for our property owners that may have a deviation of a certain size. And, you know, we went out and we put a big X that you have to tear the whole thing out and make it flush. When in actuality, there is a process to have a company come in and grind it down. And, yeah, and we've, based on a four-inch slab, I believe we, in talking with the engineer, felt comfortable with being able to grind up to like an inch and a half and not hurt the integrity of the, of the walk. So we'll, we'll put that together and have that information included with, from Mr. Brand, so.
Okay.
I believe that's enough on that topic, unless somebody else wants to talk more about it.
We've made monumental strides here tonight.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for being patient and working through that. The South Broadway stamped concrete project, just throwing all kinds of projects at you this evening. Where we stand, and I, I think we stated that during one of the prior meetings, we're, we're ready to bid the stamped concrete portion. And then as, as included in the stamped concrete were the side streets of Third, Fourth and Fifth Street, and those areas were needing repaired. Mr. Hensley, a couple meetings ago, asked me a question about assessment of that. And, and I, I answered the question that we're not assessing it because of the decorative repairs. When I said that, I was, I, I don't think I went far enough with it in my answer. We are not assessing the stamped concrete along South Broadway. Now, the premise of the project was to not assess Third, Fourth and Fifth Street. But there is not, unless Mr. Brand says differently, I don't know that there's anything in the parameters of anything that the city has done in the past that would say that the city owns that particular portion of sidewalk, that we couldn't assess that. And I think that was going along with what Mr. Cross was saying and, and talking about that, you know, coming up with the money to do the directional boring for the streetlights and maybe even freeing up some money to do the streetlights. If we assessed the, the cost of the side streets and we included that, let's say we include that with this, what we just talked about, and give those same parameters. Now, it may not all be done at the same time, but it will, obviously by twenty twenty-one, it would get done. And we could maybe go ahead and include decorative lighting on Third, Fourth and Fifth Street and make that, big picture come to fruition.
Well, you're, you're, actually, your answer to me was that it wouldn't be because it was in the city right away. And I, my thought process was that all sidewalks are in the city right away, but I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, no, that was not, I was just saying because of the, the decorative type project that the city had done in the past, it, it owns the pavers and any future, future work in the area on South Broadway. But that doesn't, that's not the same principle on Third, Fourth and Fifth Street.
Is this project, is this a, a grant that we're utilizing?
We, this is one hundred percent out of pocket.
Couldn't get one.
I'm gonna ask this question about stamped concrete. How much is it gonna cost the city every two years or three years to reseal this stuff? Because it's out in front of businesses that are gonna be putting salt down on that stuff. And I've seen numerous patios and you don't see too many driveways put in stamped concrete because of the salt issue of popping it. My question would be, what would that cost be before you send this out? That it's gonna cost the city every two years or we're gonna be painting it like Salina is doing?
Well, I, I don't know what, I mean, some concrete sealer and a, and a spray to go around and, and spray it every couple of years. That particular maintenance cost would be far less than, you know, we're talking about a, you know, a six hundred thousand dollar project. Now, again, I understand that some of it is on the side streets, but I would say no more than probably a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand is the side streets. So you're looking at a, another four hundred thousand dollars, however many years later. I believe this was done in the late eighties, maybe around ninety when that was all done.
Yeah, I can remember.
Yeah. So, you know, you, you take out, okay, what's that maintenance? What's that cost?
We haven't done nothing to it.
You're right. We haven't done nothing to it. And that's why we have such deviation in the pavers. We have water valves that are sticking up. Things have settled.
Well, if they went back in with this concrete instead of stamped concrete, or take the pavers out and just put concrete in, you don't have to do nothing to it.
Okay. I mean, we've discussed this project in the past and that was the.
I'm just asking you.
Yeah. Could we?
It's twenty, I talked to lane builders out there and it's twenty-three hundred dollars for a fifty-five gallon drum of it. I mean, how far does that go? How many times, you know, how far can that do the whole Broadway? Is that something we're gonna have to pay out every two years? He said they were recommended every two years to do that. You know, it's gonna be an ongoing cost, you know, that we're gonna have to pay out of our budget every year.
Just like we wax, just like we waxed the Annie Oakley statue to make things look nice. I mean, it's the cost of.
Even though we did that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I, I hear you. I understand. And I'm not trying to make light of, just understand that, you know, if we wanna keep things and we wanna keep them nice, yes, they're gonna have maintenance costs that are associated with it. Just like Yolo Park, it's gonna have maintenance costs. So if we leave it and let it go and we don't do anything to it, it ends up like the pavers.
Right. Annie Oakley Park, is, is that a city park, county park?
City.
Are we doing the pavers in there?
No, no.
So the stamped concrete would only be where the pavers are now?
Correct.
Right. Is that the little islands around the circle?
The little triangular ones?
I'm not following.
It's where the little, the little lights, when you go to the round, roundabout, there's pavers in the middle.
Yeah, we're not, the, this project around.
It's just down.
No, yeah, it, it's from South Broadway down, not including the circle because the circle has been done since the Broadway was done.
Out here in front of the city building.
Yeah, we're not doing anything here. Likewise, like the side of the palace, there's a small strip of pavers. They're in relatively decent shape. There's no. decent shape, there's no, we're not touching that, we're just strictly doing South Broadway.
So we're not doing nothing out in front of the city building?
No. No, if we were gonna do all that, you might as well double the budget.
I'd still like to know the cost of, to seal that.
Okay.
So what do you need from us tonight? Do you need the authorization to bid the project out?
Well, I, I mean, it is, so we, we, we need to keep going in the discussion. We had the Merchant House, we had, we had their proposal, their proposal included doing this project simultaneous, or their project simultaneously, I know that's a committee conversation to come up, maybe we table this for another meeting until all that come, gets worked out. I'm just letting you know, on our end with the, with the pavers, we're ready to move that project forward, depending on how you, other decisions that are made, so, and, and again, I'm not here to discuss that right now, that's coming up here in just a little bit. The big thing that I, I would like to have under consideration are those side streets, and, you know, do we think having the acorn lighting is a priority so that it continues Fourth Street all the way down, it enhances our downtown? Would this council be amenable to making an assessment of the repairs on the, on the side streets?
And this is taking it to Walnut?
From Sycamore to Walnut on Third, Fourth, and Fifth.
It would really enhance the downtown area.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that would, that would involve the conduit and all that.
And, and if that's the direction we wanna go, with that premise of assessment, I, I have some, I have some homework that I need to get done in order to present that, so if, if you give me the general consensus, this is the direction we wanna go, I'll start working on that stuff and getting it ready, and, you know, do we wanna use the same parameters on that that we're talking about on the 2019 sidewalk replacement program? That, and, a lot of those questions have already been answered, if we do that. Is, is that a, sound to me, okay.
Head checking, yes.
Okay. Three more minutes, and it'll be done by nine o'clock.
You won't long enough.
I'm sorry. You all have in front of you a packet. I believe at a prior council meeting, and I don't know how long ago, I didn't reprint it, but I already handed out the packet on the, the property owner grant program. It talked about if a property owner had a, a project that followed into the parameters of the grant, we would award them a grant, 50/50 match up to $10,000. I believe that paperwork's already in your hands. The second piece that we've talked about for a long time is the revolving loan fund. Council authorized, I believe, $150,000. They said, take it back to the CIC, form a subcommittee, put together some parameters, and bring it back to us. We've put together the parameters, and I'm bringing it back to you. I'm, I'm not gonna read it to you tonight, I'd like you to read it. I guess my question, as a follow-up to both of these programs, is how, what's our next step to getting them off the ground? Does council want to approve it informally, saying, yes, this looks good, I, I, I? Do we wanna have legislation that these are the, these are the programs with the various applications?
I think this council needs some time to digest this a little bit.
Okay. So, does it get thrown out to a committee to review? It had a committee to, the finance committee decided the, the first part about how much money to put in each program, and-
I just would like for council to be able to review the, the entire packet before we-
Well, certainly, I'm not asking for anything tonight, just direction on how to-
Kinda got the impression you were.
No, 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 I don't want you to approve it tonight. This is what it, what we've come up with, I'm just asking, again, like all the other things, how do we get it approved? Is it, is that through committee, is that another conversation at a, during a council meeting?
I think we'd probably review it at the next council meeting, first meeting in August.
I can do that, okay. Mr. Council President, I pass.
Sure.
Thank you. Just ask another question. Law Director, Mr. Brand. Put you on the spot there, sir.
I'm on the spot, I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. How about the city auditor, Mrs. Wilman?
Pass.
You'll pass, too. Thank you. Thank you both for your input, and that's all this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Gears.
Pleasure.
We have two committee reports this evening, one on the Personnel and Public Relations Committee regarding job description for zoning and planning director.
A report dated July 10th, 2019. Honorable members, we hereby submit a report. The Personnel and Public Relations Committee meant on July 8th, 2019 to review the wage and job description for the planning and zoning director position. The committee recommends to leave the planning and zoning director job description exactly the same, and depending upon the candidate, personnel matters and salary options could be brought back to council for discussion. Respectfully submitted Committee on Personnel and Public Relations Chairman Jeff Whitaker, Vice Chairman Dory Hadashell, and Member Doug Wright.
Make a motion to accept the committee report.
Mr. Godwin, to accept the committee's report, discussion. Call roll, please. Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hadashell?
Yes.
And item two, the Safety Committee review the public right-of-way improvements proposed by the Merchant House in conjunction with South Broadway's sidewalk project, but we are just looking at the safety issue here.
A report dated July 12th, 2019. Honorable members, we hereby submit a report. The Safety Committee meant on July 8th, 2019 to review public, public right-of-way improvements to the Merchant House in conjunction with the South Broadway sidewalk project. The committee noted that there were no safety concerns and recommends to approve the preliminary conceptual drawing as submitted. Respectfully submitted Committee on Safety Chairman Doug Wright, Vice Chairman Leon Rogers, and Member Clarence Godwin.
Move to accept the committee report.
Before I recognize that motion, Mr. Whitaker, I'm not putting you off, I have a question for the law director. Where is that committee report again? Let me. There's a sentence that I think, I don't wanna get us into hot water here. Noted that there was no safety concern, recommend approve the preliminary conceptual drawing as submitted. Is not this council's position, is it at this particular point to approve any conceptual drawings, 'cause nothing is coming from zoning and planning, where it must come from to this council?
As I understand it, the Safety Committee had taken that drawing with the way, the layout of it, had considered whether they viewed that as being a safety concern in that layout, which is a conceptual drawing.
Okay.
Not a, a drawing with specs, et cetera. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
So, their, their report is that that concept, not the specs, not the specific parameters, because that isn't publicly presented.
Okay, it's still under the, it's still gotta go through zoning, planning and zoning, it had to prove through them first.
Okay.
And architectural review, too, don't they?
Yeah. Well, now, I will recognize your motion to approve the committee's report, and further discussion, or discussion. Call roll, please.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hadashell?
Yes.
Okay, that report is accepted. Moving on to ordinance and resolutions, out of the, first is the supplemental appropriations ordinance.
An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Greenville, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019. This ordinance authorizes appropriations to the general fund for salaries mosquito control in the amount of $1,200, and supplies mosquito control in the amount of $4,000. These funds are needed to cover expenses in excess of budget.
Make a motion to suspend the rules on this ordinance and read it by title only second and third time.
Motion, Mr. Godwin, to suspend rules, read the ordinance by title second and third time, discussion. Call roll, please.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hadashell?
Yes.
An ordinance to make additional appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Greenville, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Mr. Rogers, to adopt the ordinance, discussion.
I still got mosquitoes.
Pardon?
Still got mosquitoes at my house.
Oh.
Not working.
Go ahead. Call roll, please.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hadashell?
Yes.
Heather Bitchin.
Carry me away if you ain't watching.
Is there any kind of warranty on that spray?
We didn't put that in the record, Mr. Godwin. Next, we have a resolution authorizing preparation and submission of application to participate in OPWC program.
A resolution authorizing preparation and submission of an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required. This resolution authorizes the Safety Service Director to apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program for funding for capital improvements to North Ohio Street between the intersection of Martin Street and the Ohio Street Bridge.
Move to suspend the rules and get this resolution reading by title only second and third time.
Mr. Whitaker, to suspend the rules, read the resolution by title second, third time, discussion. Call roll, please.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hadashell?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing preparation and submission of an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required. A resolution authorizing preparation and submission of an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Rogers, to adopt the resolution, discussion. Call roll, please.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hadashell?
Yes.
Add opposing or resolutions, nothing under old or new business transactions.
Monthly reports were received from the following departments: Fire Department, Police Department, Street Department, and Transit Department. A second quarter report was received from the Fire Department. A letter of appreciation and gratitude dated June 24th, 2019, was received from the Village of New Madison for the city's help in the cleanup of debris after the tornado. The following notice was received from the Police Department. The Greenville Police Department is scheduled for a site-based assessment August 12th through August 14th, 2019, as part of a program to achieve accreditation by verifying it meets professional standards. The Greenville Police Department is striving for its eighth accreditation, re-accreditation award by achieving compliance under the Advanced Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. Administered by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Incorporated, Kalia, the accreditation program requires agencies to comply with state-of-the-art standards in four basic areas: policy and procedures, administration, operations, and support services. As part of the assessment, agency employees and members of the community are invited to offer comments at a public information session on Tuesday, August 13th, at 7:00 PM. Community involvement and support enable the Greenville Police Department to fulfill its many responsibilities in serving the citizens of the City of Greenville. This session will be conducted in the City Council chambers located at the Municipal Building 100 Public Square, Greenville, Ohio. Agencies, employees, and the public are also invited to offer comments by calling 937-316-1056 on Tuesday, August 13th, between the hours of 1:00 PM and 3:00 PM. Comments will be taken by the assessment team. Telephone comments as well as appearances at the public information sessions are limited to 10 minutes and must address the agency's ability to comply with Kalia standards. A copy of the standards is available at the Greenville Police Department Dispatch and Records Office. Local contact is Joy Hart. Anyone wishing to submit written comments about the Greenville Police Department's ability to comply with the standards for accreditation may send them to the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Incorporated, and the address is available. These reports, letters, and notices have been distributed to council.
Then, we received just tonight, as we arrived, something from the Dark County Board of Commissioners requesting the possibility of some water services. I am going to assign that to the Utilities Committee, which would be Mr. Godwin, Mr. Wright, and Mr. Hensley, and ask if we could have that by the first meeting in August. We have three weeks now between, there's five, five Tuesdays here, so.
Motion to excuse the absences for July.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Hadashell to excuse the absences for July, discussion. Call roll, please.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hadashell?
Yes.
That's all the items of communication. We will call down the council, please.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for coming up and indulging in a long session, a lot of discussion, et cetera, on different things, so I appreciate you staying and listening and, and gaining maybe some knowledge. With that, I pass.
Mr. Whitaker?
Very pleased to be a member of City Council that's getting a lot of work done here for the people of the City of Greenville. With that, I pass.
Mr. Wright?
I'll pass.
Mr. Godwin?
Name is Leon said, thanks for everybody coming up tonight, and if you have an elderly person live next door the next few days, it's gonna be really, really hot, so check on them if they don't have air, and with that, I'll pass.
Mr. Hensley?
I'll echo what Jeff Whitaker said, that we've got a lot going on, I'm happy to see it happening, and especially with all the participation from the public, to get their views out, get what they want known, and so that we can do something, and I really appreciate the Safety Service Director, he has done a lot of work. I don't even know how he does it all. With that, I will pass.
Mrs. Hadashell?
I echo everything that everybody said, and with that, I'll pass.
President Burkett?
Yes, we will not meet until, unless there's a need for emergency meeting, we will not meet until August the 6th, will be the first meeting in August, so we're going to miss Treaty Day, which is August the 3rd, and that's 224 years ago that the Treaty of Greenville was signed. It, there, I think there is a piece of legislation on books that August the 3rd is designated by this member, by this council, by this, not this council, but City Council a lot of years ago, that that is Treaty Day, August 3rd, so please keep that in mind, and you can fly your 13-star flag. Yeah, 15-star flag, excuse me. Ohio wasn't quite there yet, we didn't, we didn't hit till number 17, but anyway, it's a neat, a neat time, and we got a lot of history. The gatherings in Annie Oakley Days will be coming up also, the last weekend here coming up in July, which is, I always forget, 26th, 27th, 28th, along in there, so gonna be a big time for Greenville and downtown and everyone, and as I said, we won't be meeting collectors all over, so enjoy it and hope everyone has a good time. Thank you all, and entertain the motion.
We'll move.
By Mrs. Hadashell, to adjourn, call roll.
Rogers?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Godwin?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Hadashell?
Yes.
Thank you.